The meeting is yours, ma'am.
Thank you. This meeting will now come to order. Will the clerk please read the call, call the roll?
Anne Dixon.
Here.
Jennifer Ludwig.
Here.
James LeBlanc.
Here.
Gary Cody is absent, and Kimberly Shockley.
Here.
Okay, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand.
One vision under God indivisible with liberty and justice.
For all. You may be seated. The minutes on of 20, November 23rd have been distributed. Are there any corrections to the minutes? If there are no corrections, the minutes are approved as distributed. The next item is A4 presentation by former council president Kerry McGee, Mr. McGee.
Madam President, I want to thank you very much for this opportunity. As you know, I was on the council for the last 10 years, and we've seen many town managers come and go, and I just wanted to show appreciation for Mr. Wazika stepping up to the plate when we needed him most to lead this town. And he has been the most proactive and most professional town manager that we've had. And so for that reason, I just want to present him with a little letter of recognition, and it reads certificate of recognition, character matters, leadership descends from character, Ross Limbaugh. Whereas over two and a half years, Edward Wazika has taken on many hats, which include interim town manager and finance director at that point, while also holding the role of management information system director. And whereas he has dedicated accomplice hours diligently performing his responsibilities to the citizens of this community, and whereas he has demonstrated outstanding leadership going above and beyond to keep the town moving forward. He does this because he cares about the town and its residents. Now therefore, town council on behalf of the town of Coventry express its sincere appreciation and deepest thanks to Edward Wazika for his loyalty, his hard work for the town of Coventry. In testimony where I have here on do set my hand cause to seal the town affixed on this 23rd of November 2020. So Wazika, thank you very much. It's been a pleasure working with you for the last couple of years. Madam President, thank you very much for this opportunity to present that to Mr. Wazika. Thank you.
It's our pleasure.
Here, here.
Mr. Wazika, it's well deserved. Would any member of the council like to add a few words to the recognition of Mr. Wazika's duty the last few months? Ms. Ludwig.
Mr. Wazika, thank you very much. You've made yourself available not only for the council members, but for the community. So thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments? I'd like to add my comment that it's thoroughly enjoyable working with Mr. Wazika. He's made himself always available to answer questions for meetings, et cetera. And it has always been a pleasure working with him, and I'm looking forward to the next couple of years of working with him as I continue on the town council. So thank you so much, Mr. Wazika.
Thank you.
Let us go to item number B1. Madam Clerk, please read the resolution for B1 on the agenda.
Resolution requesting general assembly approval of amendments to town charter approved by majority of the electors on November 3rd, 2020.
Have all the members of the council had an opportunity to read this resolution? Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Oh, Jamie.
Mr. LeBlanc?
I would make that motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Shockley. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Roll call, please.
Anne Dixon.
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig.
Yes.
James LeBlanc.
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Shockley, you read the charter review committee. Would you like to add a comment concerning this resolution?
Just that while not all of the amendments were put forth by the charter, I do think that it's beneficial that we changed and updated our charter. And I was proud to be part of the committee, and I'm really happy that the citizens of Coventry took the time to come out and helped ratify these changes.
Thank you so much to you and your committee. I attended many of the meetings via Zoom. It's a little bit more difficult to run things via Zoom sometimes, but you had wonderful attendance. Your legal counsel was Mr. D'Arcastino, and you all did a yeoman's job in moving through these amendments and also having discussion on other possibilities too. So thank you all very, very much.
Thank you, Anna.
You're welcome. Okay, item, agenda item C1. Madam Clerk, would you please read the motion?
Application for Class C additional hours. Jay's Havana Shop, doing business as Mr. Jay's Havana Shop and Lounge 280, 2080 Newsnack Hill Road.
Okay, would you read the next agenda item or the next item too?
Application for new Victorine license Andrea Leroux, doing business as the Ugly Mug Cafe in Convenience 182 Arnold Road.
Okay, we did have a hearing on these two agenda items November 23rd. However, it is on our agenda for this evening to have a hearing. So do I have a motion to open the hearing?
I'll do a motion to open the hearing.
Ms. Ludwig has made a motion to open the hearing. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc. Is there any comments from the public, Mr. Wazika?
When? At this point, we have none on reference to either one of them by the looks of it.
Okay, I'll just ask once again, is there any member of the public who would like to make a comment during this hearing on these two applications? Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to close the hearing?
Hey, Anne.
Yes.
President Dixon, I did have one question.
Certainly.
No, no actual concerns. I just wanted to know the process on the first application for Mr. Jay's Havana application. This is an extension of ours. What was the circumstances? Are we not allowed to originally give them these particular hours? They have to come back in and apply for the additional hours?
By, if I may, if I may, Madam Chair, under state statute, the, the Class C liquor license only has an opening time until midnight, seven days a week. They also, in their infinite, in state in their infinite wisdom, added a clause on that, giving them an extra hour on Friday nights, Saturday nights, and holidays at the fee of $600 extra. So it's an add-on to the license. At the time when we first set up and allowed the Class C, we didn't add that, that, that piece in. We run the impression they weren't going to go for the extended hour because, and they've since decided under the circumstances to do it. So that's why we had, we have to change the ordinance. They're interested in now doing that. But it's an extra hour. It's like I said, it's Friday nights and Saturday nights. It allows them to stay open till 1:00. Well, when the state says they can stay open till 1:00, and, and then on a holiday night as well, they can stay. That's the only time they're allowed to stay open till 1:00 o'clock.
Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Mr. Wazika, do I have a motion to approve the application for the Class C additional hours for Mr. Jay's Havana Shop?
Madam President, I just had one comment that I'd like to add, if that's okay?
I would like to have the motion on the floor in a second and then open it for discussion.
Sure.
So may I have a motion to approve the application for a Mr., for a Class C additional hours for Mr. Jay's Havana Shop?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Mrs. Shockley seconded it. Okay, any discussion? Mr. LeBlanc?
On these applications, would it be possible if we removed the date of birth? Just so it's, it's personal, personally identifiable information, and this is obviously public information that we're all looking at it. It's on the state's website. I just don't know if we really need to disclose date of birth for the applicants. I just thought that I would recommend that be removed.
We can, there's, there's no legal impediment to that. We can start doing that.
I just thought it might help protect them. That's all.
What we'll do is we'll, we'll redact it before it goes out into the packet. But we still need to collect it for our, for our system, but we will redact it before it goes out from now on if the council chooses.
I would appreciate that. Thank you, Ed.
You're welcome.
We have a suggestion that the date of birth be removed from the packet that goes out. Do we have consensus to do that? To instruct Mr. Wazika to do that? If you, if we do have consensus, could you just raise your hand, please?
That sounds reasonable.
Okay, good. Madam Clerk, please note that there is consensus on removing the date of birth from the packet that goes out. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, we now have, do I have a motion to approve the application for a license for Andrea Leroux's doing base business as the Ugly Mug Cafe in Convenience?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
The motion has been made and seconded for this application. Any discussion? Mrs. Shockley?
Can I just ask what they will be selling?
Of course.
It doesn't give any information on.
Mr. Wazika?
It is going to be a coffee slash convenience store, kind of like the way most gas stations have now turned into where they've got small, you know, small selection of groceries and snack food as well as the coffee and donuts. So it's going to be a combination minus the gas, just like you're seeing everywhere else.
Any other questions? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Anne Dixon.
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig.
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc.
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley.
Yes.
Thank you. The next item is agenda item D1. Madam Clerk, please read the agenda item.
Tax assessors additions and abatements.
May I have a motion to approve the additions and abatements?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Arnett, could you please comment on this, please?
Ed, is Kerry on? She has a full range of everything, and I believe I see her right there. Kerry, would you be able to chime in?
Mrs. Dixon, you need to close out the public hearing. I don't believe you took a vote to close the public hearing.
You're absolutely right. Thank you for correcting me on that. Let us move back one moment, and I need a motion to close the public hearing for the two applications that we just voted on. Do I have a motion to close a public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
I think I did do that, but that's okay. Do I have a second?
Second it.
All in favor? Roll call vote.
Anne Dixon.
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig.
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc.
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley.
Yes.
Back to item, agenda D1. Ms. Martini.
Yes.
Please comment on D1 for us, please.
Yes, we have abatements in the amount of $87,565.48 and additions in the amount of $6,326.60.
Any discussion? Questions for Ms. Martini? Mrs. Shockley?
Can I ask if you can explain more about incorrect land use? Just because it seems to be a pretty extreme abatement.
Yes, they are, and there are several. We had a revow last year, 2019 was a revow year. The revow company changed the land that the trailer park, the, pardon me, the mobile home parks are situated on. Here in Coventry, there's a law that says that they have to be residential, and they changed them to commercial because that's normally what they are. And I did not catch it, and the bills went out, and then they let me know, hey, these are at the commercial rate, not the residential rate. So I had to abate them to the residential rate.
Just to add on to the question, is that just for the land?
Yes, because the, the
Yeah, owned by the.
units themselves are owned by the homeowner.
Yep.
Yes, it's just for the land.
But it's all residential, but this is just for the land that the property's on.
Yes.
Madam President, I don't know if you want one counselor to ask multiple questions, or if you'd like us to ask one at a time?
I think you should continue, Mrs. Shockley.
Okay, so we are $87,000 less in our budget right now than we were at the beginning. And, and I'm not asking for any reason, just to make sure I'm clear. And it might be a question for Ed, but how does that affect, how does that impact the town?
Well, if I may, just quickly.
Okay.
This month, we had additions in the amount of $6,300. In the October abatement package, we had $48,578 of additions. In the September package, we had $16,000 and change. In the the first September, the 9/14 meeting, we had $79,000 in additions. So this month, the abatements were very high, and the additions were low, and that's just how it shook out this month. So it's not as, it won't be that way every month.
Overall, overall, we are always ahead and behind, even with this $86,000. It's not going to, it's not going to break the bank. It'll be covered by the additions that are coming in every month. So we'll be fine.
I know that must be shocking as your first. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. I really appreciate the.
You're welcome.
Out of any other questions? This is, oh, Ms. Ludwig.
So can I just ask another question about the categories? So for any of the items on here that say tax assessor appeal, is the assumption that the homeowner came down and sat with someone and said, oh, this is, this is incorrect? Like they called in in some way, or?
No, there are, there is an application that they have to file. It's prescribed by law. It's actually 45265, I believe, is the law. No, it's, it's a whole form that you have to fill out. You don't come meet with me. If I deny, then you can appeal to the tax board of review. And there's another appeal form. It's all prescribed by Rhode Island general law.
And, okay, thank you. And this is, it starts with the, the owner, though.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I do have a question on the receivable side. So President Dixon, I don't know if you want me to wait on that?
No, I can ask a question now, Ludwig.
Okay, thank you. So my question on the receivable side, so some of these items have, for example, like assessment shows a line through it. So could you just walk us through how that works? Is it that they received nothing, and now they are paying something? Like there was a review on the account or the property, or how does that work, like with?
I don't, I don't know what you mean by assessment shows a line through it. Oh, it's just the zero?
I, yeah, I assume it's a zero, like a dash.
Okay, so that means that there was no assessment. That's a prorated, so it's a new construction, so it would have only been through, that one was, the one I'm looking at is 11-9 was added, so when the CO is issued, then we can start taxing the building. So that building would have been at some point in probably the beginning of November to the end of December. That's why it's only so many days. It's a prorated amount.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ludwig. Any other questions from the members of the council? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the tax assessors additions and abatements?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Any additional discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Anne Dixon.
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig.
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc.
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley.
Yes.
The next item on our agenda is D2. Will the clerk please read the agenda item?
Coventry sewer subcommittee recommendation for approval of sewer tie-in located at 97 Sandy Bottom Road, Platte 38, Lot 125, sewer tie-in requested by David S. Rui.
Mr. Wazika, any comments about this request?
I've got, I've got no, no questions or concerns on it. I recommend we approve it. The sewer subcommittee has approved it. This gentleman has actually been paying the assessment on this since 2008. He had an original assessment of $12,073 back then, and he is down to $4,225.54. I think it's good to get him tied in. He wants to come in, so I think I recommend that we do it. We approve it.
Thank you, Mr. Wazika. Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation for approval of the sewer tie-in at 97 Sandy Bottom Road?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I will second it.
Okay, any other discussion on this from any member of the council? Okay, hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Anne Dixon.
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig.
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc.
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley.
Yes.
Okay, the motion is approved five, four to zero. Madam Clerk, please read agenda item number D3.
Presentation and distribution of fund from the Waterman Fisk Sewer Assistance Program to potential applicants.
Thank you. Mr. Wazika, any comments?
I am going to let Mr. Arnett handle this, but this, what this is about is we've gone back and readjusted what the assessed value of the properties were based on instead of the current 2019 reevaluation. The recommendation from the council back in 18 to go through with these assessments. So we moved our, our starting point back to 2018, which in turn went, it allowed us to go from about $50,000 in assistance up to $100,000 in assistance to, to even more recipients than what we were going to be able to do on the 20, on the 2019 assessment. So this is allowing for a bigger, a bigger resist to the residents of our town. But I'll let John Arnett go into it a little bit deeper.
Mr. Arnett, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you. I had a little bit of technical difficulties, but I got here. Mr. Wazika did a great job explaining just the foundation of this. The highlighted sections that you do see are the ones that I've already set up in meetings with myself and a tax collector as well. And we walked through the program, walked through how we offer assistance, and ready to go ahead and distribute funds. The way that the program is written is that I have to have council approval to distribute the funds prior to distributing the funds. As you can see, the, the dollar amount, as Mr. Wazika explained, went up significantly to assist the people in town, and then you will also see the differences between the contracts in red. That's all done with Excel and mathematics. It just populates. So those reds are the ones that went over the minimum that, that threshold of 15%. So you can definitely see how Hazard Street skyrocketed compared to other, the other location. So this is really what, what it is. You'll see also that there's $943.30 that are, and it's above the maximum dollar threshold that can be distributed. I anticipate passing through first come, first served until the funds are exhausted up to that, that maximum threshold of $100,000.
Thank you. I'd like to have a motion in a second, then we'll open it up for discussion by members of the council. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution with backup for the Waterman Fisk Sewer Assistance Program?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I will second it.
Thank you. Okay, discussion, members of the council, questions? Mr. LeBlanc?
On the resolution, in the first whereas, it references 68-18-4918. I think it should be 06-18-4918, if you look at page 33 of 67. I just wanted to call that out. Another thing I just wanted to mention, we, in the first whereas, we talk about Briar Point Avenue. But when you look at page 35 out of 67, Briar Point is not listed, but Dixie and Montana are. So I think if we're going to be complete here, we probably want to also reference Dixie and Montana. I think Briar Point Avenue was referenced because it's in the first resolution on that attachment A on page 33 out of 67. That's on the resolution, and then on page 35 out of 67 of the packet, this is the listing of all the properties. If you look about the 12th property down, it's a mixed-use property, and the assessment is $66,000. I really believe that during a global pandemic, to, to hand that bill to a small business, I would really appreciate if we could try to do something for that property. That assessment is, is quite large. And along with all of these assessments, I didn't know, it's obviously up to the council, but I didn't know if we could defer these assessments one year until we get out of the global pandemic that we're in, because there's a lot of people that do need help. But that's just a discussion topic for you, Madam President.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion?
If I, Madam President, if I may, as far as that property on the $66,000, that is a mixed use, and because of that, it's not eligible for the program for assistance. The owner has been in to see Mr. Arnett, and he is going to be trying to, attempting to get that property changed to simply residential and eliminate it from the combo. If he does, he would then be able to come back and apply for assistance based on that. So he's aware of it. He's, John spoke to him about it, and hopefully he'll be able to get it taken care of, and he will be, become eligible at a later date on.
And because of that, that lag as well is that, so this, this commercial mixed-use property is a garage, and, and it has its own bathrooms and things of that nature. But he's actually contemplated, you know, retiring and things of that nature. So this might be a good time, this sort of incentive. It's, it was a long, don't want to use the word incentivize, but it sort of pushed him towards thinking, really contemplating, moving, because he saw, to quote him, that's real money on the table. So hopefully he get, we can get that done and sorted out soon, and then we can see what we can do for him.
Thank you for the additional information. Appreciate it.
Any other, any other points of discussion? Ms. Ludwig?
So I, I do have a few things, and I appreciate you bearing with me, President Dixon. So firstly, Mr. Wazika, Mr. Arnett, thank you for working on this. You didn't have to do this, but you did. You dug in. You looked for how we could actually come back and help the citizens here on this list. And while not every single one of them is under the formula eligible for this, in my opinion, this was a dramatic, public, tangible step for the citizens of Coventry. So thank you very much. I know there's a few people who have worked with you on this. Monique, thank you to her. Thank you for working with the auditor general on this. I really applaud your efforts here to get these numbers down. Thank you. The second thing I'd like to say is I am generally a data and evidence person. The numbers are the numbers. But when I take a look at these numbers, these numbers feel way too high. If I were to receive a bill for some of the amounts that I see on here, and I don't, personally, I do not, and I have said this before, I'm just going to reiterate, I am not in an area that is on sewer. However, if I put myself in their shoes and I were to receive a bill like this, I wouldn't know what to do. However, if I put myself in their shoes and I were to receive a bill like this, I wouldn't know what to do. And so what I'd like to suggest, and we don't have to go into it now to avoid any OMA action, but I would like to suggest that we heavily consider finding additional ways, such as John and Mr. Arnett and Mr. Wazika have done, and find some additional assistance. I don't know what that looks like. I don't know if it's out there, but I think we should continue trying. I am willing to help with that. I know there's other people, and I assume that there are other people on the council willing to do that. And I'd like to, President Dixon, ask if offline we could figure out an agenda item for this on a future session. And then lastly, I know that there has been some talk about the numbers themselves being in line with other properties in the surrounding area of Coventry. And what I'd like to, what I'd like to say is, if I take a look at these numbers that are in front of me, you know, if I take a number, even just the amount after applying these funds, the amount of the home in the second or third column here, the total assessed value versus what we're asking these people to pay at 16, 17, 18% of their entire home's value, it is not comparable to the numbers we're seeing in other communities. So I hope that will help us formulate a discussion on a future agenda item around what we may be able to do in this area. Thank you, President Dixon.
Thank you. I just want to mention that I spoke to Mr. Wazika today, and we will be planning a workshop in January to discuss the sewer program, where we have been, where we are today, and where we need to go. So several of the items that have been mentioned by Mr. LeBlanc and by you today are very well taken. We will be sure to include these as part of our agenda for that particular workshop. I do, however, want to, let me open it up. Any more questions or comments by members of the council? Mrs. Shockley?
I appreciate the questions asked so far by my fellow councilpeople, helping me understand the sewer assessments better. But I also wonder, I see some people have pump credits, and some of those people don't fall under the Assistance Program for Waterman Fisk. So I'm just wondering if you can explain to me why people receive those credits and how that works?
They, if they need to, if they need assistance, pressurized assistance to remove the waste from the property into the lines, they require a pump that's installed on it. So what we do is if it's a commercial pump, I believe we're offering $9,000 to the pump, a write-off on the assessment for the commercial grade pump and $5,000 for the residential. The, the actual cost, we've been, we've gone and looked, and the actual cost on some of these is about $3,000, if I'm not mistaken on what Monique told me. But at one point, they were five, and we kept them at the five to be able to reduce down their assessments as much as possible with that, so.
So just to be clear, it's only these properties that require the pump?
Correct. Not every one requires it.
Okay.
If you don't see the pump credit, their property doesn't require a pump on the system.
Any other questions by members of the council? When we started the discussion, Mr. LeBlanc mentioned that there were some errors in the resolution. I'd like Mr. LeBlanc to offer an amendment to the resolution so that we can correct, vote on these changes and get them corrected and in the record. So, Mr. LeBlanc, would you please offer an amendment to this resolution?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to make an amendment to the resolution so that it properly reflects the, in the first whereas, the resolution that we're referring to, which is 06-18-4918. In addition to that, in that same whereas, we also need to reference Montana and Dixie Street. Other than that, the resolution is properly stated.
Okay. Madam Clerk, do you have those changes?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to have a motion for the approval of the amendment to the resolution. Do I have a motion for the amendment? Oh, Mr. LeBlanc just made it. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second. Any more, any other additional discussion? All right, let us vote on the amendment. That is the changes in the, whereas, the reference to the resolution number and the addition of the streets. All in favor? Roll call vote.
Ann Dixon?
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Fine. Okay, the amendment has been approved. Now are we ready for the vote on the emotion? So, like a motion for the resolution as amended. Do I have a motion for the motion as amended?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Shockley. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Any other additional discussion? Okay, all those in favor, roll call vote, please.
Ann Dixon?
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, everyone. And as mentioned, a number of issues have been raised by Mrs. Shockley, Mr. LeBlanc, and Ms. Ludwig, and we will be sure to cover those during our workshop, which will be in about a month. So thank you so much. Okay, Madam Clerk, will you please read item, Agenda Item Number D4?
Public Hearing Regarding Proposed Amendment to Coventry Zoning Ordinance, Article 10, Earth Removal, Sand and Gravel Extraction.
President Dixon, I don't mean to interrupt, but I think we skipped an item.
Looking at D4.
D4?
Right, that just wasn't what was read.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is the appointment of a member to the sewer subcommittee. It's page 36 of 67.
And I don't have the complete packet in front of me because I printed it out last week.
All right. Section D4, as Town Council President appoints one council member to the sewer subcommittee.
The sewer, just opening statement, the sewer subcommittee has two council members on it. Mr. Gary Cogan is one of our members who serves. And with the departure of Mr. Greg LaBosse Mair, there is an opening for a council representative. By Resolution 4042306, the Coventry Town Council serves as the Coventry Sewer Commission and has created a Coventry Sewer Subcommittee. The council president is authorized to appoint two members of the council to the commission. I'm appointing this evening very happily Mr. Jamie LeBlanc to the subcommittee. He is well qualified to represent the council on this committee. Congratulations, Mr. LeBlanc. Would you like to say a few words?
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam President. I really appreciate you appointing me to this sewer subcommittee. This is a significant issue impacting not only the residents in my district, but our entire town. And just as long, just as long as I, along with other concerned residents, have been actively involved for the last four years regarding this sewer program, bringing up issues and recommendations to the town council, general assembly, and the auditor general, I hope to be able to continue to contribute and provide additional recommendations to this sewer subcommittee.
Thank you so much, Mr. LeBlanc. We're looking forward to your being our representative on this subcommittee. I did receive a number of emails from the community in support of Mr. LeBlanc, and I'd like to thank the many men and women who sent me emails. I responded, or at least acknowledged, every single one of them. However, there were some misconceptions in the emails about the role of the subcommittee, which I would like to get clarified. So I'm asking our interim town manager to provide an explanation of the sewer condition and the sewer subcommittee. Mr. Wazika?
Yes, ma'am. Back when, when the sewer subcommittee was born on January 12, 2004, Mr. President Ron Woods signed it in. There was a list attached of all of the requirements and what the, what the responsibilities of the sewer sub were. And I'm just going to read off the responsibilities, duties, and assignments for the Coventry Sewer Subcommittee as originally proposed and authorized under the, the resolution. Elect Chairman and Vice Chairman, done. Draft a set of policies for operation of the sewer subcommittee to Town Council adoption, been done. Review current application process for individual sewer tie-ins and make recommendations to the Town Council on changes deemed necessary. Been done. Review tie-in requests and provide recommendations to Town Council on each individual sewer tie-in. That, that is the primary responsibility of the sewer subcommittee to do that. That's an ongoing, and every time back tonight, we had a, we had one recommendation from them. Evaluate current sewer assessment structure and recommend changes to the Town Council. Again, that was all done back in '04 when this was first initiated. Draft requirements and a process for sewer contractor licensure and recommend it to the Town Council for adoption. That was also done. Recommend to the Town Council the appointment of three sewer subcommittee members to act as sewer, the Coventry Sewer Board review, to hear sewer user, user appeals and recommend issue resolution to the Town Council. That's been done. We have a subcommittee, and that is maintained annually. Advise the town manager and Town Council as to the availability of funds for expansion of sewer system and the means of securing such funding. That is still an ongoing and active responsibility of, of the sewer subcommittee. So those two are the ones that are actually in play. Advises to such other matters concerning the sewer system as the Town Council may request. So the council has the ability to, to appoint tasks to the sewer subcommittee in reference to any, any activity involving the sewer subcommittee. But as of right now, the two primary approve sewer tie-ins and advise the availability of funds and, on funds for expanding the sewer system. That's, those are the two responsibilities of it.
Thank you. Are there any questions that any members of the council would like to ask Mr. Wazika about the, the role of the sewer subcommittee? Okay, I would expect that when we have our workshop, we will invite the members of the sewer subcommittee to that workshop. We will also have a full discussion, as I mentioned before, of where we've been with the sewer program, where we are now, and where we expect to go. And there may be some tasks that the Town Council may identify as a result of that workshop that will be presented to the sewer subcommittee for their recommendations. Any questions on that? So I'm looking forward to that, that workshop, and I hope all of you are. Any of you who have any specific questions that you would like to cover during the workshop, please do forward them to Mr. Wazika for putting it on the agenda. So thank you so much.
Ms. Ludwig has a question.
Sorry, Ms. Ludwig.
Thank you, President Dixon. I believe there'll probably be several of us that have some items that we think would help that session that we can forward over to Mr. Wazika. And congratulations to Mr. LeBlanc.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number E1. Our legal counsel, Mr. Garn, has informed me that we need to re-advertise the hearing for the, and set a new hearing date. So there'll be no hearing tonight on earth removal, sand and gravel extraction, Article 10, earth removal. Once we have a date, we will put it back on the agenda, but this has to be re-advertised. So Madam Clerk, we're on to item E2. Please read the motion.
Continuation of Public Hearing for Amendment to Coventry Code 106-6E, calculation of fair share development fee, also known as the impact fee.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to open public hearing?
I'll make a motion to open public hearing.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. The hearing is now open. Mr. Wazika, is there anyone on the line for the public hearing?
There is no one at this point. No one is raising their hand.
Like to wait a couple more seconds. This is an important agenda item for us all.
We have, we have a winner. Susan, I'm going to be bringing Susan in.
Right there.
Susan, please state your full name, spell your last name, and state your address for the record, please.
Susan Mocker, M-O-C-K-E-R, 15 Hazard, H-A-Z-A-R-D Street, Coventry, Rhode Island.
Go ahead, Susan.
Right. I have a question. You know, I know I qualified for the Waterman Fisk Fund because my assessment was so high. But I have a question, like, on the assessment, you know, the bill, the, where it said pay from out towards the higher amount of money, or next to the higher amount of money, which was a 64 instead of 62. So I'm just wondering, you know, why that happened. I mean, if I'm going to pay, you know, if somebody's going to pay up to pull them out, they should have paid a low amount. Is that right?
Yes. Excuse me. We have a hearing right now on the impact fee, and we certainly would like to have your comment during public comment. But right now, we have to restrict our comments to the agenda item which is before us, and that has to do with the, the impact fee. So could you stay on the line so that we can have you speak during public comment?
Yes.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your cooperation. All right, do we have anyone else who would like to speak about this particular item relating to impact fees?
There are, there are no one with their hands raised at this point.
Okay. May I have a motion to close public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close public hearing.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call vote, please.
Ann Dixon?
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
In order to start our discussion, I would like a motion for approval for the, the approval for the amendment to the Coventry Code 1066E, calculation of the fair share development fee, also known as the impact fee. Do I have a motion?
President Dixon, it was slightly hard to hear you. Did you say you'd like a motion before we open comment to the council?
Yes.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Ms. Ludwig?
Thank you, President Dixon. I did have a few questions. I'll, I'll send these to Mr. Wazika, and I don't know if you or Mr. Crossman can, can possibly answer. So I went through some of the documentation, and I was in attendance of the Town Council last month where some of the questions were answered. But now that we've had a few more weeks, can you just comment on a few of the following areas? So firstly, I did notice that public schools is on here. And there was a discussion as to whether or not we should increase the amount that was being used for the potential bond that's coming in. And then also, in general, the breakdown for public schools. Was this checked with the finance manager or school committee? Or maybe if you can just comment on that process?
Mr. Wazika, could you please comment on the process and what the council is able or not able to do at this point in time, please?
The, the numbers for, for the capital improvements are part of the CIP, the Capital Improvement Plan, which is a five-year document that has to be produced every year. The, the numbers from the school came from the school. They were trans, they were emailed to us by Mr. Levis. They had been approved by the school committee. So they're not our numbers. They're what was put in, and they were put in, and they, that whole CIP is approved by the Planning Commission because of that compliance with the comp plan on the development that wants to go on. But all of those numbers are all from the department heads. And like I said, especially in the school department case, they were vetted by, by the school committee and approved. We, we can't go back and change numbers that were put in and accepted as part of that, that plan.
When was that, Mr. Wazika?
That was done at the beginning of the year, the way it's always done every year. It's always done at the beginning of the, of the budget process. So those numbers, as it is, when we So those numbers, as it is, when we look at the school side of it, there is, Dave, what was the number you used? Eighty-five million for the bond?
Yes. So as I think everybody is aware, the school department is in the process of considering some school building work that would be bonded under the Rhode Island Department of Education School Construction Regulations. The work has not yet been solidified. In other words, there's been a Stage 1 application. The Stage 2 application is going to come next February. The Stage 2 application will provide further refinements as to what the anticipated bonded construction project numbers are. So what we did was to include them and to account for them in this impact fee report. We took the median of the range of potential construction. So the potential construction that is being considered by the school building committee for which a bond would be obtained is between $42 million and $127 million. So we settled on the average of $85 million, the middle number there. And that is the number on which we calculated the bonded indebtedness and the carrying costs for an $85 million school construction project. That does not mean that there will be an $85 million school construction project. We won't know that until the school building committee refines its numbers and makes a formal submission at their Stage 2, which is due in February of 2021.
Thank you.
Just a follow-up question to that, if I may, President Dixon. So it sounds like, once that comes out, we would have the option of revisiting the impact fee if that number is substantially higher than the average that was used. Is that correct?
Not for another five years. We cannot, by state statute, it's once every five years that it shall be done. That was our thought. We had a meeting on this today, and that was one of the questions that was proposed. But by statute, we're not able to go back and change it next year.
We did have a meeting this afternoon because I was very concerned, as I asked at the last meeting, as many of you did. The impact fee seemed to be lower. And so we were trying to understand why it is lower, what were the factors that impacted that. And we discussed a number of factors, such as the rate of inflation, which was used for the previous calculation, was 11% or higher, much lower now. We also talked about the increase in the number of households today versus the number that was used previously. We also talked about the removal of what was $10 to $12 million in capital improvements for the police department, which were in the former calculation, which are no longer needed. So that reduced the number of capital improvement project value for the police department. And we also talked about the removal of sewers. And I think Mr. Wazika can explain that piece of it, the puzzle. So there seem to be a number of factors which we were not aware of or had not discussed at the last meeting that can help account for why this number seems low. But basically, we have to look at why the previous number was so high. So Mr. Wazika, could you please address that?
Well, the base number that we work from to divide by the number of households, which is a simple math, basic math on calculating the requests from every department plus inflationary rate over the five years, back when these numbers were originally drawn up, and that 75-96 number is the number that was utilized back in 2000, and that number's been on the books since. There was another one done in 2010. We don't know what happened to '05. I can't find anything. 2010, if we had gone, there was a report that was conducted, just like the one that we've just recently done. And in that one, it came down to a $7,400 impact fee. For some reason, it was never enacted. They changed the ordinance. They added the addition of several departments that were not receiving impact fees, but they never reduced down to this lower number. Gets better. We found the paperwork and the documentation for the '15 study that was not complete, but all of the numbers were there. All of the documents were on that. That actually, if it had been enacted, would have reduced our impact fees down to $5,400 back then. Excuse me, $5,548 on that. That was never enacted. So these numbers have been going down over the years. There was a $17 million estimate for the police building. That was in part of those original numbers. There was a $9 million sewer bond prior to the Sewer Enterprise Fund being formed. So that was in the system as well. Those have come out. HOX and REC had multimillion-dollar requests that have since been lowered to more realistic numbers that are nowhere near those kinds of numbers. So that overall, what those original numbers were based on was $103 million, and then dividing by the number of units. Our number now is down to 70... Dave, what is that one down to? Seventy... Hang on one second, please.
The current number, Ed, is $5,854.
Right, but I mean the total amount that we're based on.
The $75,920, Ed?
Yes.
That's the number. So we're down, but we're down, that's down by $27 million over what the prior one was. That in itself brings those numbers down. That's why we're looking at the 58-54. All of these numbers are documented. All of these numbers have been sent in. The CIP's been approved. We have no ability, at this point, to go back and change any of these numbers. If we do, we risk a lawsuit by developers, and not only do we lose the impact fees from that developer, if that developer, in fact, wins, we will lose impact fees entirely. We will not be able to collect them at all. So the idea of going back now, after the fact, to change numbers after what we've already been approved, what's going through the system, is not a feasible option that we have at this point.
I did ask for a legal opinion this afternoon concerning our ability to change the expenditures insofar as, right now, there is a certain percentage allowed to each category. And does the Council, at some future time, have the ability to change the percentages by category? So if we decided to move some of the money that was, I guess, assigned to a particular category, I'll say Category A to Category B, could we do that? And Mr. Garin, could you please repeat your legal opinion on that?
Sure. I want to address first, if I may, Madam President, the question that Ms. Ludwig had. The Impact Fee Act, in the definitions section, this is the act that was passed by the General Assembly back in the year 2000 to enable communities to do impact fees, all communities throughout the state through a uniform process, does say that the Town Council, or the Town, I think that means the Town Council in our case, should review its capital improvement plan at least every five years. So I think it is possible to consider, and we don't need to consider it tonight, but it might give you some comfort in what we're doing tonight. I think it is possible to revisit the capital improvement program as it relates to impact fees in less than another five years, if the circumstances are correct and it's warranted, simply because I think the Enabling Act allows it. It certainly contemplates it. And so I don't want to rule that out entirely. I think we could do it. And I think that really was your question, if I'm not mistaken, is can we revisit it? I'm not going to rule that out. Also, during our discussion today, the Town Manager, President Dixon, Mr. D'Agostino and I, another question came up about, does the apportionment that you look at tonight in the amendment, department by department, is that binding? And is that an inflexible rubric that you have to follow in spending impact fees? There is nothing in the Impact Fee Enabling Act, which is always the most important thing, that prospcribes that you spend, prescribing that you can spend in one year an amount that might be more or less than the proportionate share shown in that matrix that you have before you tonight. I think it's important to consider that as a guide, but I don't think it's inflexible. I think communities are always challenged with expenditures year to year, from department to department. And to make it a model of symmetry among all of them is probably going to be impossible. So I don't think that the Council necessarily, or the Town, can never spend more in one year proportionately than that fractional share that you see before you tonight. And further, I'm not convinced that the Town can't vary from that proportionate share in the aggregate. I think the Town may very well be able to do that. It's just not clear in the Enabling Act because it doesn't say you can't. And I looked at all of the court decisions today on Lexis, reporting decisions about impact fees. It's never been decided. And so I wanted to just put that out there. So what you're really doing tonight is you're approving a means by which you are raising the revenue through the impact fees. But I don't think it's static, either in the amounts or in the distribution. Does that make any sense? Does everyone understand that?
I think, thank you, Mr. Garin. What that means is that we know that, for example, the public schools have requested money to support their 2021 budget, and will come back to ask for funds to support their 2122 budget. If we determine, based on circumstances, that we might want to give the public schools 5% more than they are allocated in this particular document, and we can take the 5% from a number of categories, we are able to do so. So we can increase the percent allotment or apportionment to a particular category, should the Council decide it wants to do it based on the circumstances. But right now, I just, excuse me, is that correct?
Yeah, I believe that's true. But because that question isn't really before the Council tonight, this is not a spending night.
No.
All you're doing is creating the model by which you're going to assess impact fees based on the capital improvement program that you have. And I don't think that that is necessarily static, either in spending or in the way you raise the money. I think it can be amended.
On the agenda tonight is not a discussion of the proportion of the money that goes to each category. What is on the agenda tonight is to approve the setting of the impact fee.
Really, just to approve the ordinance, which the General Assembly has authorized the Town to do.
Okay.
Just a little quick history lesson. Coventry was among the very first towns in the state to have an impact fee ordinance. I think it was created in the '90s. The General Assembly saw that there were many towns doing impact fees. They did them on their own. They didn't have any enabling legislation. There were a lot of challenges and so forth. So in 2000, the General Assembly created a commission to study it, and then it was enacted. I was on the commission back in 2000. And I do not have a perfect memory of what happened. But I know that the purpose of this Enabling Act was to give towns some boundaries upon which they can do this kind of revenue raising, but also to give them some guidance in how to do it fairly. So that's all we're doing tonight. And I think the proposal presented by Mr. D'Agostino and Mr. Crossman is well within those boundaries.
Now, Mr. Garin, on page 47 of 67, the ordinance number is not listed. Do you have a reference for us?
Let me get that in front of me. This would be... Oh. Yes, it should be, well, it should be the same number as the original ordinance, which I don't have. I think the Town Clerk, it's certainly appropriate for the Town Clerk to fill that in after the meeting. There's clearly been notice that you're amending the impact fee, and that notice was in accordance with law.
Thank you. Other questions?
Sorry, I don't have the answer, in other words.
Right. We'll ask the clerk to put down the ordinance number. Let's see, Mr. LeBlanc, questions?
Thank you, Madam President. I do have a few questions. The first one is, starting on page 57 out of 67, it says Town of Coventry Fair Share Development Fee Report, and then in parentheses, it says revised March 9. Is anybody concerned that we're looking at a document that was written in March 9, but we're approving it in December? That's just one question. Another question is, I don't know, is this a legal document that, if we do go to court, this document will be discussed? Because if so, the mill workers' house site remediation on page 62 out of 67, I thought that that had already been taken care of prior to March of 2020. But I don't know if anybody knows the answer to that one. That's $115,000. Another question I have is on page 64 out of 67. The total for the school is not accurate. It's not off-material. But if this is a legal document, I would just like it to be accurate, and it's off by $800. And then on page...
Excuse me, Mr. LeBlanc. What page reference was that about the school?
64 out of 67 has a total of $3,358,058. It should actually be $858. And I know it seems immaterial, but if this is a legal document, I would just prefer that we try to be as accurate as possible.
Mr. Crossman, could you please check those calculations?
And this is more of a discussion than correction or anything. On page 65 out of 67, we talk about sewer upgrades and expansion. Now, I did hear Mr. Wazika say that we removed sewer because we set up the enterprise fund. But I do want to call out that, in our budget for our town on an annual basis, at least starting in FY '19 and '20, we've actually allocated $200,000 per year to the West Warwick sewer debt that is not coming out of the enterprise fund. It's actually coming out of the Town General Fund. And if this is a five-year plan, I would think that we would actually want to increase the total of our impact fee calculation by a minimum of $1 million. And that would be the $200,000 that we paid last year, the $200,000 we're paying this year. And then I would presume that if it's in our budget now, we don't want to take it out, and it would be in the budget for the next five years. So that would increase the total on page 66 out of 67 by $1 million. So I just wanted to at least discuss that.
Mr. Wazika, comments, please?
I'm trying to think of which one to start with. As far as utilizing impact fees to pay down by a bond service, on debt service, Nick, can we actually do that? I thought we couldn't do that. I may be wrong on that one.
I don't have the answer to that tonight. I don't... The question is... Ms. LeBlanc, could you repeat the question on the bond?
It's actually in our town's budget. It's general ledger number 1-101-8950-44510. It has $200,000 in it for FY '19 and '20. And also, and since we're level funded and we're adopting last year's budget currently, we have another $200,000 this year. This is a five-year plan. I would say if we're... This is a five year plan, I would say if we're spending two hundred thousand times five, that'd be a million dollars for a five year plan. That I would think we would want to increase our impact fee total on page sixty six out of sixty seven, since it's a. An expense of the town. That we are incurring. And that would in that would increase this page forty seven out of sixty seven by seventy seven dollars and eleven cents. The total.
The the packet that I have has sixty three pages.
You don't have, what do you got, Nick, the the electronic? What's good, what happens on there, you there's there's a couple of documents that aren't in that to go for reasons of confidentiality. They're in the, they're in the hot packet, which you don't get.
Okay, well, then it's just the pagination difference, so. Is it possible that the pages that Mr. LeBlanc is talking about are pages that are actually in what I what I'm looking at?
Yes, they are, you have them.
So do I just deduct two page numbers and I'm. I suppose add two page numbers?
Mr. LeBlanc, what is the section under which you are referring and then Mr. Gorm can look in that section in his packet?
So I guess when referring to this sewer upgrades and expansion section.
Actually, page sixty two, I believe, if you look at yours.
And currently in the total for the total impact fee. Without including the cost of inflation, Mr. Gorm, what the total was thirty nine million, nine seventy four, six forty nine. And in that total, we are not allocating any dollars for sewer upwards.
Oh, excuse me, just for clarification, thank you, you're talking about section G sewer upgrade.
Yes, and we are not allocating any costs in the total impact fees at all for sewers. And I'm just calling out the two hundred thousand that we as a town are incurring on an annual basis since last year. And I'm assuming we will be incurring that going forward. You know, that's a fee of the town. Any new development should. Participate in assisting us with those fees.
I thought the amendment that I saw for tonight did include. Yeah, I I'm. I'm a little confused, Mr. LeBlanc, because if you go to. Page one of two of the actual amendment.
There's a hundred and seventeen dollars for sewers is what you're referring to? I'm not, so I'm, I don't know what page number I can tell you to look at, Mr. Gorm, but. For me, it's page sixty six out of sixty seven, there's a total of thirty nine million, nine seventy four, six forty nine. Is the total impact fee prior to including the cost of inflation. And I don't, I I believe you have that number in your packet. And what is made up of that thirty nine million, nine seventy four, six forty nine is public safety. Of five hundred ninety thousand, park and recs, six hundred and forty eight thousand, five hundred. Public works, ten million, one hundred and fifty six thousand, one sixty four. Public schools, three million, three fifty eight, oh fifty eight. Town hall, eight million, four eighty six, oh fifty nine. Sewer zero. And other public facilities, sixteen million, seven thirty five, eight sixty eight, and that's how you get to thirty nine million, nine seventy four, six forty. So what I'm saying is, we are not including the two hundred thousand that we are including in our town's budget.
Well, that's that's service. Jamie, that's the problem with that is that's debt service, that two hundred thousand, that cannot go in under that as a capital. Be part of capital, the capital needs, so it can't go in in with that. Am I, again, I'm gonna ask you, Nick, am I correct on that, it's a case, it's a debt service number. It's nothing to do with purchasing anything or improving anything, it's simply paying the debt service to West Warwick.
But it's towards upgrades at West Warwick's facility. Which we are incurring because of the capacity that we own.
I I'm sorry, I'm having trouble finding the section where. All these amounts are delineated and then add up to thirty.
They're not, I did that because I added up every single section to get to the thirty nine million, nine seventy.
Okay, all right.
And that is what I did do.
And section six is what he's talking about, VI.
These these expenses are for upgrades. So I just wanted to call it out, Nick, that's all, Mr. Gorm, sorry. All right.
Mr. Gorm, as mentioned, in order to get the total, there's no chart that lists each of these individual. Sections with the number, what I did also was to take the number at the end of each section, put it in a spreadsheet. Added it up and came up with the thirty nine thousand, nine hundred seventy four, six forty nine and then added the. Inflation, et cetera, the cost of the bonds, so that's how I came up with the total myself, but there is no chart that you can look at immediately. But the question is, the question is on the table. Mr. Wazika, you've given your opinion that it is not a capital improvement, Mr. Gorm, we need your opinion on this.
Well. Dave and Russell prepared the report, so they might be in a better position than I am. To answer the specifics like that, Dave, Russell, do you guys want to perhaps weigh in on Mr. LeBlanc's question?
Sure, I'll I'll take I'll take a stab at it, so. The I can, I can tell you, Mr. LeBlanc, why the the number isn't there, isn't included in in the report is because the report is based on. Capital expenditures reported from departments, I understand what you're saying about this is an ongoing expense of the town. And over five years, there'd be a million dollars of expense, I think the, I think the concern is that. That that million dollars. Again, over five years is, I'm just not sure that that is a capital expenditure. I think it's more related to the fact that the town has a contractual obligation to pay for improvements periodically. At the West Warwick Treatment Facility due to being a signatory to the, what's called the intermunicipal agreement. And from time to time, there are expenditures that have to do with. Different upgrades at the plant to capture more nitrate, nitrates, to capture more phosphorus. I think those are the things that that are contemplated in that million dollars of the two hundred thousand annual expenditure for five years. But I don't think that would be an appropriate capital expenditure. Identify, in other words, a capital expenditure would be more about sewer infrastructure. Pipes in the ground, things of that nature.
They they are going forwards, like pump houses, pump upgrades, so I I am just, I'm just, I just wanted to ask the question at least. Because it seemed like it could add up to a a very large number that would increase the fees, so I do appreciate it, Mr. D'Agostino.
All right, are there any other questions? Mr. Budwick?
One of the areas that that we actually recently talked about was vehicles for the schools. In the budget meeting last week, but I I'm just using this as one example of something that. I don't see any. Expenditure line items in here for any vehicles for the school. So I don't know if it's baked into one of the numbers. Or if it's truly not on here, but in general, what if there are items that we think are not? Included here?
Well. Capital, capital improvements don't generally. Include. Vehicles, that's that's the basic rule, there there are a couple of exceptions, but they don't apply to the school vehicles like school buses and. Maintenance vehicles, so this has come up time and again because. Department heads want to spend money on vehicles and.
I I used a bad example. Let's, I'm gonna, I'm gonna use a different one and hopefully this will be better. When I look at parks and rec, I don't see any line items for a new school scoreboard. That's gonna run us between five and ten grand. I don't see it on the list anywhere, our scoreboards are twenty plus years old. So in in that example, if there's something that's not on here. Is it, oh, well, now, because we'll we'll have passed this and now we have to wait, does this not fall under the, you know, big enough for us to make a change?
I just don't know enough about the scoreboard, I mean, a capital improvement has to have a service life of ten years or more. Has to be for a public facility, I know there are a lot of places in town that are public, but. They're not really owned by the town. You know, the devil's always in the details and you're talking about an omission. I I honestly don't know why it's omitted, I was it, I mean, I I would assume that it was omitted by the Department of Parks and Recreation. When they put in their request, Dave, do you have your hand up?
I I do, I I think I can, I think I can address this question and probably in anticipation of some other similar questions. So just because there is an item listed in this, in this impact fee report. Or just because there is an item that is omitted from this fee report does not mean that you can't purchase. Or or fund those particular items. For example, the Parks and Recreation, just to take that department as an example. They were asked in as part of the twenty twenty one budget to identify. Costs in their capital improvement plan associated with the anticipated growth over the next five years. They've identified six items in in that in that capital improvement plan. That doesn't mean that there aren't seven items or eight items or more items. And it doesn't lock the town into just these items listed here. These are the items that were identified in this year's capital improvement plan. That for which impact fees can be applied. So the absence of the scoreboards, for example, does not mean that impact fees cannot be applied to that. When it comes to expenditures, I think that's what Nick was indicating early on is that this is a guide. On how the town raises the impact fees from developers. The expenditure level of that is really for a future discussion and does include things like. What are the budgetary requests coming in a normal budget cycle from a department? Those are not necessarily tied to the impact fee calculation. As I think all of you may know, impact fees under the statute, they are allowed to be collected. And they must be expended within a certain number of years, if they're not expended for development purposes. Then they actually ought to be returned back to the developer. So just because an item happens to fall under this capital improvement plan request. That's in this impact fee report does not lock the town into, for example, just. Providing a hundred and four thousand dollars for basketball courts as a practical matter, let me try to put it into practical terms. As a practical matter, at such time as the town builds basketball courts, the cost of those courts may exceed a hundred and four thousand. Just due to construction course costs at a future date, so it isn't, I I I think it's. You shouldn't focus necessarily on the particular expenditures, but rather on the, we're trying to create a foundation. For the town to assess developers and by creating that foundation and tying it to reasonable costs. To to be captured over a, over a five year window, that's the purpose of this amendment. It's not to direct how any impact fee monies would be expended. Because you may have a need that has to be addressed before you would normally, you may have a need that has to be addressed, let's say in year one. That you might have planned to address in year four, but exigent circumstances require that need to be funded earlier.
And thank you, and Mr. D'Agostino. Forget about the expenditures, if I go back to your example where we say, okay, I have six line items, but really maybe there's seven, eight or nine. What I'm trying to understand is, are we not thinking big enough because we didn't put in seven, eight and nine?
I understand your question and, you know, respectfully. There are a couple of moving pieces here, so. I think we could all agree that, given the COVID experience, there are capital expenditures. That we're going to have moving forward that aren't even identified in this report, and I'm thinking on, for example, on the school side, I know that. A lot of schools have purchased those sterilizing guns where they they spray the 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 sterilizing vapor, okay? Those weren't even contemplated by the school department when this, when this report was was created. But what we do have are a number of documented capital expenditures that were identified at the time. That the report was created and and remember, this report is a reflection of. A five year capital improvement program that was presented to the. Planning Commission, approved by the Planning Commission and rolled into the, not only this report, but. The the town's budgetary expenditures, next year, you're gonna get a new set of identified expenditures. And that's why I understand what you're saying, sure, maybe we could have added some more items, but in the aggregate, even adding those items. Because of the calculation and 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 how the numbers work out, it's not linear, so just, in other words, adding. Adding those those scoreboards to this is not gonna necessarily move. The 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 fifty eight fifty four number by a material portion. And one of the things that we're concerned about is being able to defend this and it would, it would look bad if you think of it this way. If it were seen by the council to be trying to capture every single moving piece. Because. It just, it it just would not, would would tend to make the report and the analysis less defensible.
I also think that all this data was collected back in February, the report was prepared in March and for some reason, it's just getting to us. So the data, the list may seem very old to us because a number of factors have occurred, a number of things have happened between February and now. What I'm hearing is that when we go to department heads or we go to any member of our community. We need to be very clear in the directions that we're giving people as to what they need to provide. And what kind of forecasting and long range thinking they need to engage in, so it may be back in February. Scoreboard was not needed, not even contemplated, that's just an example. It may be that the school department did not really think about the capital expenditures. Capital improvement items that they would need based on COVID, but this is the report that was prepared back in February. So we're looking back in time and we're seeing that there seem to be some shortfalls. But it doesn't seem that there's anything that we can do about it at this moment in time, but we can, as Mr. Gorm said. We have to prepare a capital improvement plan at least or an impact statement at least every five years. There's nothing that prevents us as a council from looking at this in another time period shorter than five years.
If I may, if I may interject one thing, if you look at the ordinance in the state statute on this. The capital improvement items cannot be ordinary capital improvement items, they have to be items that are necessary because. The the population is expanded, the number of properties is expanded, it has to be dealing with that. Not just saying, okay, we want new scoreboards and that's got nothing to do with the fact we now have more more people in the town, you can't use that in the system. That would, it's it's not what's allowed under under the, under the law, it has to be direct cost related to. The enlargement of the population, if you look at the way the ordinance is written on this, so that's part of it. As far as scoreboards, I know Rayner has done a great job of getting scoreboards taken care of by by the leagues. There's several that have been put up that the leagues have raised the money and put them up, so it doesn't come from the town funds on on some of those.
We have, we have the world little league champions, that's why I used that example.
That scoreboard is a brand new scoreboard that they paid for, they put about thirty grand.
I I didn't mean, I didn't mean to get us stuck on scoreboards, it was, it was just.
I know, that's what I'm saying, but she, there have been a couple of others that have been put up by by the leagues themselves, so she. She didn't put them in because one, it's questionable if they even qualify under what's supposed to be in there. And secondly, if she doesn't need it and you put it in there, we're just asking for trouble by putting stuff in that that's not gonna be. That's not an actual cost that the town's gonna gonna face.
I believe Mrs. Shockley has a comment?
Yes, thank you, and I apologize, I don't know one hundred percent how this formula is made, so that leads to a couple extra questions. First, human services. In the paragraph in section C, it says that there's a need for additional capital improvements to satisfy the needs of the town's increasing senior population, caregiver support groups and victims of domestic violence. I'm guessing that's something that's a cost that would increase based on a higher population. But there's no cost at all attached to human services. Is there a reason for that?
Bob, Bob, it's my understanding is Mr. Robalod did not put in any capital improvements for this year and in that CIP because of the fact that just receiving the entire brand new building. And he is, he's gone after a bunch of grants to for some things. So if he doesn't feel he needs it, then he doesn't need it and we can't just put stuff in there.
It just the way the paragraph reads, there there seems to be a need. And so in the footnotes for in section E for public schools, it says 44% will be is possibly reimbursable by ride. In the final cliff note on the last page, it says 45%. And I believe in the last video, Mr. Mari made, it, he said it was going to be 42%. Because each percent is $850,000, if we're using 85 million as our number, is there an issue with what we're using as percentages here for what will be reimbursed?
I'll, I'll answer that. I that is going to be the subject of the legislature and the Department of Education, the final percentage. And anybody who is that clairvoyant, who can predict the the percentage that's going to come through deserves, you know, a gold medal. This is.
But we're using something. And in this report, we seem to be using two different somethings.
I agree. The 40, well, Russell, Dave, do you have a explanation?
Could be a typo. I don't know.
Yeah, could be.
Yeah, it should be 44%. And and as Nick pointed out, that may drop. But at the time that at the time of the submission, as or as of the numbers and now, and again, remember Coventry has not made its submission yet. It's going to in February, the stage two submission. But Coventry is is currently under the state aid formula entitled to a 44% reimbursement rate. That that very well may change when the legislature tackles their budget. So that number should be 44% in both footnotes.
Okay.
And I would just like to make a quick note when the building design committee comes before the town council in February. The council will be asked to approve or amend or reject their proposal, their plan. That plan is then submitted to RIDE. RIDE will then either approve or not approve the plan. And at that point, they will tell us what we can expect for a reimbursement. So there's nothing really definite about this until we get a letter back from RIDE that clearly states what we can expect.
Yep, totally understandable, but I know we're inserting numbers and I just want to make sure we're inserting the closest numbers we can based on the fact that we did put this off for so many months.
A minimum, we should be consistent in our documentation.
And can I also ask, you guys indicated how our population has changed. But if I remember from the meeting you guys were having about this with the former council, it's not the population that determines this number, but the number of households. So can I ask if you know, either Mr. Crossman or Mr. Wazika, how many households there were the last time? Because it seems the more households we get, the lower impact fees are going to be.
Correct. That will happen. The more, the more that number increases, the more it's going to spread out that that amount that we're that we're looking for. So it will bring those numbers down.
And just to understand, because I can't wrap my head around why it makes any sense.
Well, because you're dividing a number by a larger number. So you.
No, no, I know how the math works.
All right.
Sorry. My question is why we use that? Only because it seems like we're saying the more households you have, the less each household impacts your town.
That, correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, but I, we have to, that's based on what the state says we use for calculation.
Yes. So there's, there's a couple of different ways you can calculate it. You could calculate it based on population growth. But but population growth is again, it's somewhat imprecise. And the 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 hard, the the best numbers that we had were from the tax assessor to request numbers of households in town. And that was, in other words, that was, that was the basis. That was a very firm basis. We don't, we don't have any problem defending that number. If we defend the number based on population growth, we have to then start projecting out anticipated growth numbers. And then how many people are going to be in a household? We know that, you know, that that old saying that you have 2.5 kids. I'm still looking for the point five. But but you know, we felt that the the basis should be on the numbers of households. Because it's, 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 it's easily defensible and the numbers, the numbers are not variable.
Yeah, I don't even think I'm commenting on that you use that. It's an overall overall, the way it works doesn't seem to make sense. The way you had to do it doesn't seem to make sense as far as how homes will impact a town. But Ed, you had given us, you know, just different things where budgets went down and inflation rates went down. So I was just wondering if you knew the number of households from 10 years ago when this was done.
I do not, but I will look it up and find it and I'll send it out to you, to everybody. I might just add one comment. What happened in March?
What?
What happened in March? COVID. We couldn't have meetings. That's why, no, that's why I'm, because everybody's questioning, why hasn't this been seen before? COVID hit, we didn't have, we didn't have any, we didn't have any meetings for several months. And somehow it was forgotten about during a review of what had to be done. We found it and that's why we brought it back up because it hadn't been completed. Going over to make sure we've covered everything during the year. And this hadn't been put forward after not being able to have meetings for several months. And it just, it just for whatever reason, never got back on the agenda the way it needed to. But that's why there was that lag. It wasn't intentional. We were unable to do meetings.
No, that makes sense. Just, you know, I want to make sure that we're, because we did wait, but the numbers are as close as they can possibly be.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other comments from any members of the council? We've had a lengthy discussion. I'm going to repeat the motion and which was already made and seconded and then call for a roll call vote. The motion is to approve the amendment to Coventry Code 106-6E calculation of the fair share development fee, also known as the impact fee. Roll call vote, please.
You're muted, Joanne.
Ian Dixon?
Yes.
Jen Ludwig?
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Okay, the motion is approved. Thank you all. Okay, we're ready for public comment. Mr. Wazika, is Susan still on the line? Does she want to speak?
Susan is still on the line and she just raised her hand.
Excellent. Please repeat your name and spell your last name for the record, please.
Susan Mocker, M-O-C-K-E-R, 15 Hazard, H-A-Z-A-R-D Street in Coventry.
Okay, thank you, Susan. A question, please, or comment?
I have a couple of questions. You know, I know our assessment got lowered because of the Waterman Fisk Fund and it was 64,000 with the interest, but now it's low to 41,000. But on the bill I got, it said for the payoff amount next to 64,000 instead of next to 62,000. So I was just wondering why it included the, you know, interest and not the lower amount of money. Because any, you know, any other bill I've ever had, if I want to pay something off, I was put, pay the lower amount. And also, I don't know why the full amount of interest wasn't on that bill for the 20 years. I mean, I don't know why it's not a set interest rate for the 20 years. Because I talked to John Arnett and he said that in the future, that, you know, the interest rate will change or can change. And also I talked to Monique Cool and she said that we're going to have to pay interest on the remaining money every year. And I've, you know, any other loan I have had, like even our mortgage, but the interest gets spread out over the whole time until the interest was paid off. And then we just paid the, the, I can't think of the word, the principal.
All right, Susan, good to see you, to talk to you again. Can't really see you, but good to talk to you again. So I'll talk about these a little bit again. So the first thing I'll address is the interest rate piece. And we can't, we don't have a way to apply an interest rate to a specific person, or we have to apply that rate across the board to everybody that has a sewer assessment. In the way that we we apply those rates other off the weighted average of the the debt for our sewers, their sewer debt. So as debt falls off, then that means that your rate would come down. If we were to add more debt, then the rate would come up based upon those weighted averages of how much is owed by the town. So that's the first, that's the first piece. The other one, as far as the payoff amount, as these assessments were, we've been paying, the town has been paying essentially for a couple of years worth of debt already that has been incurred. So we, I believe, and unfortunately Mo's not on the line to tell about the the correct law that we have to go with. But we are paying on that and I believe that we have to pass that along at this price when we when we pass out those those bills. So we can't, and we're not, we're not, we're not like a true bank where we can have sophisticated types of billing systems and do all these amortization amortization schedules for each individual. As far as the Waterman Fisk Fund, I just want to also let you know that that dollar amount that you would get, that $20,000 that is going to be applied to your bill, it's going to be billed straight off the bat to this first year. So whatever that dollar amount is, is going to be paid. So you only have to worry about the next until the following year. And then we're going to apply the rest to the principal balance. So and then again, then that would be the normal payment schedule. Hopefully I answered those questions for you.
All right. So if I was to pay off, you know, the full amount of my bill next year, would I still have to pay interest?
Next year, no, you would not have to pay off interest. From what I understand, you can pay off the the principal. And after I apply this, you could call Monique up and we can ask what that principal balance would be and you can just apply it all.
Susan, would you be keeping your house for the next 20 years?
Yes.
As long as you're staying in your house, then paying it off would be good. If you're not, why would you pay it off? Because you don't, you're not responsible for that entire bill if you sell your house. That goes with the house. So if you're going to pay it off, and that's why we highly recommend that nobody goes and takes a loan to do this, because if you take the loan, you're on the hook for the loan. But if you, if you, if you're going to sell in a couple of years, just pay the annual and then that amount owed continues on with the next homeowner, not to you. You don't want to pay that all off and then sell the house and lose all that that money. It isn't a benefit. I know what you're saying about the interest. That's why I'm saying if you're, if you're going to stay in your house, then it is, it is beneficial to you to do that, to save the interest. If you're not taking a loan out because your loan may be even higher. But if you're not going to, and you're going to be selling at some point, you're going to, again, you'd have to calc it all out on at what point you're selling, how many years you're paying interest on. But you will lose out and that bill, like I said, the bill travels with the house. It's not more bill, it's the house bill.
If I was to pay it off, I wouldn't have to take a loan out.
But yet then in that case, then if you wouldn't have to take a loan out and you pay it off and you sell your house for whatever reason, before the 20 years is what the normal payout would have been, you've paid all that extra money for no reason. That would have been the responsibility of the next homeowner.
Okay, what extra money?
If, say you sold your house in five years and you paid $40,000 out one shot, that 40 is gone. You're not getting that back. If you, if you sell the house and you don't pay it all off, you would only have paid four years, five years worth of payments. There'd probably still be 30 plus thousand owed. And that will be picked up and paid by the by the next person who buys the house. So it all depends on how how soon you would sell it. If you're going to keep it for 20 years and it really is, then it is beneficial to you. But if there's a possibility you're selling, you need to do all the math on it to determine if it's, if it's a benefit to you to pay it off early.
Thank you. I'm just trying to weigh all my options.
Talk to your accountant on that. He'll be able to explain it to you better. But if it doesn't make a lot of sense to do that, if you will be selling the house, I just don't want to see you waste money.
Okay.
Mr. Mocker, do you have any other comments?
No, that's it. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Mr. Wazika, is there anyone else on the line?
At this point, as a matter of fact, there is. I mean, Susan off and we have Senator Reptakis.
Good evening, Senator Reptakis. Please state your name and address for us.
Lou, you're muted.
Okay, sorry about that. Leonidas Reptakis, 2088 Newsnack Hill Road.
Good evening, Senator Reptakis.
Thank you, Madam President. Congratulations on your appointment as president and congratulations to all the new members of the Coventry Town Council. I just want to bring up a couple of issues that we should prepare either January or the beginning of February to have the General Assembly delegation meet with the town council, probably through Zoom. I think this could be very important because we don't know where we're going to be at by next year regarding the budget for the following year. As we are aware of that next week, we could have a budget. Both the Senate and House is going to pass the budget that should have been done back in June of this past year. And I'm looking at probably whole harmless Coventry. I know I saw the meeting last week regarding Coventry School Committee and the Coventry Town Council. So some of the numbers have been released. If you do not have a copy of the Senate Fiscal Eight Education on the proposed budget, which again should have passed last June, Coventry, it looks like Coventry is going to be probably around 24,400,000, probably a little above the number I saw last week. So I think that's very important this week or next week to get you a solid number to allow you to help you in the in the budget discussions. I'm not sure when the final budget for Coventry will be, will be enacted, how it will be enacted. So if if you can see some dates, maybe in January or the beginning of February, I think it would be a good idea. And then there's some other issues. I know you discussed earlier tonight. You're going to be meeting regarding the sewer subcommittee. There is legislation again in the General Assembly. What we want to do is try to work with the new council. I'm trying to find some assistance for regarding the Coventry Sewer Program. What we can do as far as the General Assembly. So I think that's very important. And there's also some other hot button issues for to discuss. I'm not sure if you're aware with Kent County Water being a hot button issue, there's over 400 Coventry residents that have been impacted with these high bills that were received for the third quarter. I know we had a meeting, Senator Gordon Rogers, Representative George Nardone, Representative Serpa and myself met with the Kent County Water Authority on Friday to try to find some type of resolution. There's going to be additional meetings also with the PUC. And I think that's very important because there is about 400 Coventry residents have been affected so far with these high bills. I know we have two members from the town of Coventry that do sit in the, on the seven-person board of the Kent County Water Authority. So there is a lot of moving parts. There's a lot of issues that hopefully we can try to meet. I'm not sure if January would be a good time. I don't know if you want to wait till the first week of February. But the next couple of weeks, we should have some solid numbers for the town of Coventry as far as eight education. And again, it depends on a lot of the formulas that are part of the eight education, whether it's the. whether it's the poverty percentage formula, whatever the case might be. So we want to try to get you those answers for you as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Raptakis. When you talk about aid to education, are we discussing the 2021 budget for the school committee or the school? Or are we talking about what would be incorporated into the 2122 budget?
No, it's probably the, well, the state still has not passed their budget. This is called, well, it's, it's, it's got a, kind of strange name called the skinny budget. I don't know how skinny it is, but this is money that would give you an answer for your current budget. Because again, the state has not passed a, a budget. So we're going to be passing probably two budgets within a seven-month timeframe. The one that we're going to be passing within, uh, next couple of weeks. And then there'll be another budget we're going to pass, hopefully, if, uh, if we're back on our former schedule pre-COVID around June of 2021, which is seven months away. But what we're talking about right now is FY 2021, which should have started July 1st of 20 and runs all the way to June 30th of 2021.
Thank you very much, Senator Raptakis. Mr. Wazika, do we have anyone else on the call?
We do not. No one has their hand raised going once, going twice, three times. With, you're out. George, ma'am.
Thank you very much. The next meeting of the council is very soon, next Monday, December 14th. And then we also have another one December 17th. And who knows what Santa Claus will bring to us for the rest of the month.
And one for the 28th as well. Don't forget the 28th.
Yes, that, that was a surprise that Santa Claus was going to bring this, Mr. Wazika. Do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
With such a hesitation, I, I thought you were enjoying the meeting so much that we were just going to continue.
I always enjoy public comment.
Thank you so much. Do I have a second to adjourn?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, roll call, please.
Ian Dixon?
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Thank you so much, everyone. Have a wonderful evening and we'll be seeing each other very soon. As I said, on the 14th and on the 17th and wow, on the 28th again. Unless you knock on my door and say you want an additional meeting or two and I'll certainly consider it, Mr. Wazika. So thank you so much. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.